Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting on Wednesday, June 26. Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Crosstalk).
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle. Councilmember Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Joshi. Councilmember Lombardi.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Here.
Adequate notice, please.
Adequate notice if this meeting is required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975 has been provided by now you have noticed sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Legend, and the Sentinel on December 1st, 2018, and post domain lobbying complex on that same date.
Thank you. I will forego council president's remarks and hand it over to our attorney who is going to give us a quick language update.
Okay. For those that weren't here Monday night, as to the petition for the initiative ordinance, the clerk certified that there were sufficient signatures to have the election held as a special election which was requested in the petition. They needed 15% for that, 10% to have it on the November ballot. There was more than 15% well in excess of 15% necessary. So, the clerk certified Monday night that that was held. Pursuant to statute, the way it works is once the clerk certifies it, that acts as the introduction and first reading of the ordinance. So, the introduction and first reading of the ordinance has happened. It will appear on the agenda. The way the law sets it out, normally it would be at the next meeting, but the next meeting is not going to be until July 22, I believe. And that would be beyond the date allowed under the statute, so the next meeting has to occur on or before July 15. Part of the reason for the delay is there was a discussion among council tonight as to what day would work when we can get at least the majority of the council members here to vote on either accepting or rejecting, either accepting the initiative ordinance or sending it to the ballot in September, and I'll deal with that in a moment. And that date was decided on to be July 10 at 6:00 p.m. So, there will be a vote on July 10 at 6:00 p.m. and a public hearing as to whether to accept the initiative petition and enact that ordinance. If the council accepts that night, if there are a majority of council members voting support the ordinance, then the ordinance will be adopted. It will go through a normal process for the adoption of an ordinance, 20 days, topple period, you know, whatever. If there are not sufficient votes that night to accept the ordinance, it would go to the ballot. The ballot, the process from then on would be the next day, the clerk would advise the county clerk that there was an initiative petition. It was not accepted by the council and needs to be put on the ballot for a special election. And that special election must be held not less than 40 nor more than 60 days after, and this is where it gets a little complicated, stay with me, 10 days after the vote occurs, there is a period for the committee of petitioners to withdraw the petition, presuming that will not happen. It would then be 40, not less than 40 nor more than 60 days after that. So, at some time mid-September is when the special election would be heard if, in fact, that's where it goes. So, that's where we're at. The ordinance has been introduced. It's had its first reading. It will be published according to law, and there will be a vote on July 10 at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the administrative agenda from Mayor Lankey. Item A, appointment of Antonio R. Sigliano to the local emergency planning committee. Have a motion to accept.
Council President, I'll motion to accept. I also, though, want to say that I'm in favor of this appointment. I think that Mr. Sigliano is very, very well qualified for this particular task or duty. I think it's a good thing. In fact, I don't know anybody who knows the town better than she does and is concerned about it as she is in this regard. So, I'm going to fully support this. I make a motion.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on to the calendar year, calendar year 2019 municipal budget. We have the introduction of the calendar year 2019 municipal budget. Have a motion to introduce. Motion to introduce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes, for introduction.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
Now, we're doing the introduction of the calendar year 2019 solid waste budget. Have a motion to introduce.
Motion to introduce.
Do I have a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes, for introduction.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
Moving on to unfinished business, ordinance of further consideration, public hearing, and final adoption. Clerk, please read.
This ordinance amends the Edison Township Code to revise and update the 2019 per gallon water rates the township charges residential and non-residential users for the discharge or normal domestic sewage and the rates charged significant sufficient industrial users of the township sewer system.
Opening up to the public.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
Okay. Any council comments?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
This ordinance, if I read correctly, is, will be increasing roughly 4.9% sewer rate.
I believe that's what the...
Correct.
Correct. Monday's council meeting, I did mention that is there a way that we can have the comprehensive budget for sewer department, which is not the normal tradition as of today, but this will really help us to understand, especially for the taxpayer, where our sewer department stands and what steps needs to happen in next six months or a year or two years, and that will really help to decide this rate increase.
Yes.
But again, we are introducing the ordinance here to increase the rate ahead of a time before going through the budgetary process.
Well, I haven't had, no bills have gone out this year. The increase alone for this will come out to $695,000 because we, no change in the senior rate. And the budget alone for the sewer, the MCUA fees have increased $816,000, and the interest on notes have increased $273,000. So, just those two line items are more than the increase that we're doing.
Okay, but just to compensate that, but again, we haven't yet gone through the comprehensive budget process, right? We haven't looked at the, our staffing model. We haven't looked at any repairs that can be projected, any probably capital money that is left out compared to what we anticipated in terms of expense. So, without going through the study, I am not sure and I can really vote on this ordinance. Thank you, Council President.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Could we have some clarification on how this affects seniors?
0%.
0%?
Correct.
I don't know if the seniors know that. I think, I think it's important that they do. And is there a process or a procedure that they have to complete before that zero is a zero?
The current process is they have to go to the senior center to get a senior ID card. Then they can just go to the tax collector's office, show them that card, and it's put on their account that they're a senior and they're frozen.
Okay, couldn't we, do we need to have that second, or that first step? Couldn't they just come?
We're working on that right now, Councilmember.
Okay. I think to streamline it and make it easier for the seniors, they should show up, show proof of identity and the proof of their age, and then their sewer rate is frozen. We should make it as easy as we can. Thank you.
Councilman Deal, I think, I think we discussed this Monday's meeting, and one of the reasons is, I guess, they wanted to offer other services to the seniors when they came into town hall, right?
Then they can have, I'm sorry, Councilman, but then they can have an option. They can go to the senior center and see all the benefits you're going to get from a senior. Or the person who doesn't want to do that or can't do that, just come and show proof and get their discount.
And get their, and get their discount.
Identity and proof of age.
Right, right, okay.
Maureen, is there a timeline when this needs to take place, or it can be done at any time?
The change in procedure?
No, the, in order for the rate to go into a freeze, do they have to do it by a certain time?
No, no, it's just when they come to the town hall as of that date.
So, then it applies to the next bill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
What documentation would they be required to bring?
I just believe a driver's license, you know, proof of birth date.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Lot and block number, address?
They, they don't have to prove that. We'll do that right at the tax office.
All right, thank you.
Council President, just to clarify here, this ordinance, whether up or down, is not changing any procedure for the senior freeze. That, that's the current process.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
No.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
New business, propose ordinance, public hearing set down for July 24, 2019. Clerk, please read.
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Council President, I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading, published according to law for further consideration and public hearing set down for the date of July 24, 2019. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
Ordinance 2046-2019, please read.
This ordinance adopting the Woodbridge Avenue redevelopment plan for the property identified on the township tax map is Block 390.A, Lot 1.A4, also known as 844 King George's Post Road in the area of Woodbridge Avenue, Route 440, connection ramp to the north, King George's Post Road to the south, the Edison Hotel to the west, and New Street to the end pursuant to local redevelopment housing law, NJSA 48:12A-1.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
Council President, I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading, published according to law for further consideration and public hearing set down for July 24, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the public comments on the resolutions only.
Walt Stociel, 2118 Oak Tree Road on R. 32562019, pedestrian improvements at the Edison Train Station. What kind of improvements are we going to do?
To the engineer.
At this time, this is a grant application, so the, the application is, is not specific in what exactly is going to be done at the site. Typically, what is done in these types of procedures is a grant application is applied for, and if it is granted, the stipulations will be set forth in that grant that will guide us into what can and cannot be paid for by that grant, and then a project is, is developed from there.
Do we have a dollar amount for what we are applying for?
It's not on. No, it's not. We apply for these similar to how DOT paving projects are applied for. There is no amount requested. It's just, we request, we, we request an amount, and the, the grant may or may not be issued for, for a given amount.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the resolutions? Yes, Mrs. Hennessy.
Good evening. Mary Ann Hennessy, 20 Carmelo Drive. As a follow-up to Walt's question, my question has to do, if I might ask, to the engineer?
Right.
Thank you. When you talk about the train station, are you talking about the portion of the train station at Central Avenue or the portion of the train station where there's a parking lot off of Kilmer Road?
The entire complex. It, that is, it's, it's a, these applications are, are very broad and, and they're not defined, and that is the intent, is the intent is to attract funding for some type of a project. And so, that's the best answer I can give you, is just the entire station.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the resolution?
Estranemis, 162 B Fay Street on R. 319, the contract with the Edison Water Company until December 31, 2019, for operation, maintenance, and management services of the township's water system. Do we have any idea what happens after December? I mean, is this, is this part of a plan or not?
Maureen.
Right now, it's, we're in a process of either having a referendum on or not right now. We only know what's happening to December 31. We may or may not be bringing the water back into the township to run.
Well, if we don't have this, if we don't have these folks taking care of the system, how do we get our water and how is the system taking care of it? I mean, do we have any clue at all?
Then the town, the town would be running it.
The town will be running it, one way or another, after that. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the resolutions?
Motion to close public portion? Second.
Anything pulled for separate call?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull the two resolution for the separate vote. R. 320-062019 is the township property sale, and R. 329-062019 unless the, the resolution is corrected for, to reflect the correct amount.
329, and what was the other?
329, because the original resolution say $100,000 instead of $66,530.
Right, and what was the first one?
320.
320.
320.
If the amount is corrected for 329 to reflect the $66,530,031 instead of $100,000, then I don't need to pull this for separate vote.
I think the question is, was, was it corrected? Was the correction submitted to the clerk's?
The resolution I have says 66.
Says 66.
Yeah, there's no correction.
(inaudible). This is authorizing change order.
Change order.
Correct, and that, that is the exact question I asked, that, you know, did we exhaust that $100,000?
No, we did not.
No.
No, we did not.
Okay.
That is what you asked Monday night.
I think they did that just to put that into the system, and then the actual amount was the 60-something thousand.
Then, that's one of the one, 320.
And just 320?
Yes.
Okay.
No, 329, no more.
Just 320 now. Okay, so we're pulling 320. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel, 320.
Yes, resolution 320, resolution authorizing the sale of township property not needed for the public use pursuant to NJSA 48:12-13. This is close to an eight-acre property which was, which is getting sold for $2,800. And few months ago, I did mention about the, the starting bid price, which was not fair, even though we knew that this land is contaminated land, it might need the buyer to invest close to one and a half million or $2 million to clear up the property. But again, knowing the history of this property, the adjacent lot was purchased by the same buyer, and then we are awarding this sale to the same buyer or the purchaser for $2,800. Again, I don't know what the, the math or the theory went behind starting, giving the $2,800 as the starting bid price. I raised the question on that, but I, again, I haven't heard more details on this property.
Okay, I think, just to clarify, the largest portion of this bid requirement was that they needed to pose the bond to be able to meet the requirements to clean the property, and that was a requirement of $2 million.
Correct.
Which is what we require, or the estimated requirement to not only clean it, but deal with any potential additional soil remediation or anything that might be required that we don't know at this point. But again, the focus was the $2 million bond requirements.
Correct. I agree, Council President. I'm not denying the fact that this is a contaminated land, but this is literally giving the free land, eight acres property, to someone who is willing to invest $2 million to clean up this property and put this back for the use. The use that was indicated is recycling?
That's what it's zoned for now, yes.
Correct. So, this is not going to really bring a lot of tax dollars for this township if it is going to be used for the recycling purpose, and that's where my question is, you know, why, you know, we are, you know, selling this for $2,800. But again, not going into details, I will not be supporting this resolution because to me, technically, we are giving eight acres of township land almost free. Thank you, Council President.
Council President. Yes, sir. I just want to clarify that, at least in my view, it's not giving the property away. We're requiring that in exchange for the property, in exchange for the consideration of $2,600 or $2,800, that they take on the liability of cleaning up the property and bringing it up to an acceptable standard. Our best estimate is that, that's at the very least $1.5 million, which is why the bid specs required that they have a surety bond of about $2 million. So, I would respectfully disagree with the description of giving away the property, and I am in favor of this resolution. I think that we're getting a lot of pressure, the town is getting a decent amount of pressure from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, where if we don't do something with this property, in addition to having to clean it up for the money that was stated, we'd be subjected to fines from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and that's why I'll be in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Council President, I'm going to agree with Councilman Lombardi. We're not giving it away for free. We're asking that this property be cleaned up. The estimate is a million and a half, $2 million. As Councilman Lombardi just said, we would be under pressure for the DEP to do it, so why should we spend that amount of money to do it? And something that also concerns me because of the location and the history of that site, a million and a half could be a low, or 2 million could be a low number if there's further contamination found. So, we get out of it by accepting this tonight and putting the, the onus and the task to the company that bid legally to, to take over the property and to clean it up. Thank you, sir.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to also agree with Councilman Deal and Councilman Lombardi on this property. It's not giving it away. The town required in the bid specs certain things, and one of them was indemnify and have the bond, which the other two bidders did not do. They did not meet that criteria. There's spontaneous fires on this property. Right now, it's a liability to the town, and in, in the bid processes, you have certain rules and regulations, and the other two bidders did not follow those rules and regulations, and I'll be in support of this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Council President, my last remark on that one is, I, again, I get it, one and a half million, $2 million, but if I look from the taxpayer standpoint of view, even if it is a one and a half million dollar expense on that property, or maybe your $2 million investment on that property to clean that one, just divide 2 million by eight. What is the valuation of that? That's close to 300, less than 300, $250,000, $250,000 per acre, which is substantially lower, but again, I will leave it to the rest of the council, but again, I will not be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Council President, just to clarify, the two other bids, one was approximately $100,000, the other was approximately $300,000 with no surety.
Right.
So, in my opinion, I don't think we could just throw out all the bids. We'd have to choose one of them, and I, and I think the most responsible bid is the one that has the surety of the $2 million and the cleanup and the indemnification to the town. Thank you.
Mr. Northgrath? If we don't accept the bid person that meets the criteria, all the criteria, including the bonding, doesn't that open the town up to litigation? Potentially?
Yeah, it's, I'd really rather not address that question.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Again, I think our point has been clear that we don't know what the amount of exposure is going to be for the town. The $1.5 million, it's an estimate just to remove what's currently there, but we don't know what it's underneath it and what the potential cost could be to the township, so again, I will be in support of it. Thank you. Any other comments? I make a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
No.
Councilman Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes.
Okay, we have communications. Motion to accept. No move.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our petitions and remarks. From the list, we got Walter Stociel.
Walt Stociel, 2118 Oak Tree Road. On May 19th, we had the Edison Mettuchen Bike Tour, the 23rd Bike Tour, and I'd like to thank Joyce and the Recreation Department, Public Works, the police, and everybody for doing a fine job. I think we had between 150 and 200 people. It was one of the largest crowds ever, and for 23 years, another great weather day. We've never had bad weather on the bike tour. And one of the things we did when we created the bike tour, we wanted an opportunity to announce bicycle and pedestrian improvements that, that would encourage people to use their bikes. And at this bike tour, Mayor Bush from Mettuchen announced that they got a $280,000 grant to do a bike lane on Grove Avenue from the Edison border to the Greenway, which was, which was great news. Do we have any plans to do a bike route on Grove Avenue?
We're actually looking into that through our grant writer.
Okay, so maybe next year, we can have an announcement at the bike tour that we're doing similar. Also, Councilman Pagel from Mettuchen rode an electric Lime bike from Mettuchen the first day that electric bikes were legal in New Jersey with their bike sharing program. We don't have a bike sharing program, do we, in Edison? No, we don't?
We don't.
And at our Greenway meeting on May 25th, Freeholder Tomaro showed up, and he announced that the Freeholders on May 16th announced that they were accepting the recommendation from the County Open Space Committee from 2006 to extend the Greenway to the Edison Line at St. Joseph's High School from the trailhead in Mettuchen, and they're hiring an appraiser to do an appraisal and a firm to do the Phase 1 environmental study. So, we might be getting the county to acquire the section from the trailhead in Mettuchen to St. Joe's and extending the Greenway in the future. So, Bike Tour was great, and we had a lot of good bike news the past month. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Oark.
an appraiser to do an appraisal, and a firm to do the Phase One environmental study. So, we might be getting the county to acquire the section from the trailhead in Mettuchen to St. Joe's and extending the Greenway in the future. So, Bike Tour was great, and we had a lot of good bike news the past month. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Orchid.
I thank you, Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. My first thing is how disappointed we are about the Edison Farmers Market. At first, there was this rumor going around that there is no Edison Farmers Market, which was not true, because that wasn't a New Jersey Edison Farmers Market. Now, unfortunately, Pops, due to staff shortage, wasn't able to start on Father's Day, and unfortunately, Jay's trying hard to find another farmer, but we can't get any vendors, which is really sad for our area. Many times, I've come up to this podium and ask anybody, if you know a vendor for the Edison Farmers Market, we would love to have you. Just think of the people in that section that don't have any fresh fruits or vegetables. Yes, we're still waiting for a lot to open, but there's no fresh fruits or vegetables in Clara Barton area. Wouldn't it be great if we could offer that to our seniors? Thank you for the Edison Family Day and Earth Day, it was very well attended. On the suggestion of the ramp to 287 off of Woodbridge, is there any idea when that, there's a patch of road that's really bumpy, could lose my tire, is there any idea when that might be fixed?
We'll have engineering look into that.
You have to go to the left lane.
It's on 27, though, right?
Yeah, to go up to 27, you have to go to the left lane to go up.
This is Route 27 to 287?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's Woodbridge to 287 ramp going up, you have to go to the left side to avoid the potholes. And I know previously, we were talking about Grandview off of Route 1, any idea when that might be fixed?
I know that we spoke with Car, Maria, go ahead.
No, that's going to be part of the 2019 paving program, that section.
There's that road to her. July 11th, Clara Barton Neighborhood Preservation Committee will have their meetings, of course, everyone is invited to attend. And July 16th, Clara Barton Neighborhood Block Watch, the same place, Clara Barton First Aid Squad, Clara Barton, everybody's able to attend, you're all welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Laura Scorola. Address, please.
For Longview Road. Just so the council's aware, I'm coming up to bring up points that I have against the concession, against the agreement with SUEZ. So, I understand you're going to be voting on this for July 10th. So, last meeting that we had with SUEZ, the contract was listed, as well as the consultant's report and calculations as well. So, I just wanted to go over what objections I have to this, because I know you've been researching it, and as I understand, you were presented with it last year, 2018. So, starting with, just to make one point, this contract was listed with the rate schedule referred to over countless times, but yet, the rate schedule was not included. So, it had to be requested, actually. In fact, there are several schedules that were not included. So, the public did not have the advantage of reading all the schedules, so I did get this Schedule 13, so I have it, which is called the rate regime. So, just so the people of Edison have a little bit of an understanding, this contract is with SUEZ. SUEZ is an international company based out of France, okay? They have a North American company, just so you know, that's based in North America, in Paramus, New Jersey. Then they have a finance company, KKR, and then they have this Edison Environmental Partnership, which is an LLC company that's incorporated in the state of Delaware. So, I want the people of Edison to realize, there is four layers of insulation that SUEZ has against any type of arbitration, any type of litigation. In fact, in the state of Delaware, any company that has an LLC there, you cannot have a trial by jury. I just want the folks of Edison, the taxpayers of Edison, to know that. No trial by jury, it's only by judge. In the township of Middleton, Middletown, in New Jersey, they had a problem with SUEZ, and they went to the judge, and the judge threw back to them, because in their contract, they have arbitration clauses, which is exactly what's in this contract, arbitration clauses. I just want the good people of the Township of Edison to know this. So, they have judges, and that's how they decide these cases. It's, every time you have a separate company, what happens is, you put up a wall of separation against litigation. So, you have four layers of insulated walls against the Township of Edison. We're going into a bear fight with our hands and our feet tied. This is, it's almost insanity to go into, to enter into an agreement like this. If SUEZ was upfront, Edison Environmental would have formed their LLC in the state of New Jersey. That would have just been a simple thing. And why they had to form a separate LLC, they formed it to protect themselves against litigation. There is litigation against SUEZ all over the country, all over the state of New Jersey, we've discussed that all the way back into March. So, I'm going to just pick up with the rate regime, as they appropriately have named On page 125, Section 5, it's called Adjustment Following a Rate Adjustment Event. Just so the good people of Edison understand, a rate adjustment event takes place every year, in which, in case you're unaware, there has to be a certain amount of revenue that SUEZ, Edison Environmental, all four of these companies have to be compensated for their service. So, what does that look like? Well, according to Section 5, this happens every year, so that they're never behind on any of their bills or any of their payments. But the revenue factor, in their factor in their equation, is 11%. So, we were all sitting at the meeting in March, and we're seeing 4.9, and then 4.5. The first seven years, does everybody remember this, 4.9% first seven years? Well, what you were not told is that there are two components of the rate. One is the fixed rate, and one is, and the second part of it is called the variable rate, okay? So, the variable rate has to get somewhere, they have to get to 11%, folks. So, the seniors may have a fixed rate, but you know they're going to have to hit the companies, the companies in the Township of Edison, they're going to get hit hard, which is not a good thing, they're already paying a lot of taxes. And us, regular residents, are going to have to make up that difference. What they have to get, this rate regime requires 11% annually, it's a requirement. Now, that also does not include any extra charges that might take place. Let's say there's a catastrophic event of some sort. Let's say something happens to, you know, more water mains broke than normal. So many things that can happen, they can account for all these other possible increases. And so, on top of the rate adjustment event, you might have a special rate adjustment event. You have 30 days to dispute it, according to the contract, 30 days notice. Now, here's another thing. We were told in the meeting in March, that we had 24 hours notice to give to inspect something. Let's just say something is going on that's not right, and we keep having a problem with our pipes, they're working on something, we want to check it out. Do you know, that was a lie. It's 48 hours notice, is what it says in the contract. And I just want to make a point of that, so people know this. 48 hours, it's in Section, let me just tell you so you know.
Ma'am, just to...
8.3, Section A. I just want everybody to know, and other people may have this contract as well. So, did you want to make a point about something?
Yes, ma'am, your time is up, but I just want to clarify that the vote on the 10th is not to deal with the SUEZ contract, is to, it's to either vote on the ordinance that was driven by the petitions.
Yes, and the ordinance is that it wants to go to ballot, but in order for the people to have an educated vote, they have to be informed. Can anybody lend me time? There's so much I have to go, I have a few more minutes I have to go over.
We don't, that's...
He'll lend me some time.
I'll give you three minutes, and...
Okay, I'm going to hit some of the hard points. Here we go. All right, so, here we go. We need $461 million of capital improvements, because the $481 that's being advertised includes a 20% like surcharge type of thing. So, in order, at the end of 40 years, without any other issues, we're looking at $3.52 billion payback. $3.52 billion, 40 years, guys. KKR gets 4.8% on their issuance of all the bonds. March, we were told, we don't want to take out bonds, we're concerned about our rates, our rating. Guess what, we're getting four bonds. We would get them at a much better rate if we did it direct. Okay, here's a couple of other things. They didn't take into consideration a building, they also have to have a building for all these employees. $900,000 a year for rent, didn't include any increases, didn't include any CAM, all that's not listed. Here's the last thing I'm going to say that's very important, because I'm limited on what I can say here. But, according to this contract, 14.2 termination. Do you know that SUEZ, or Edison Environmental, can get out of this contract for any reason? Let me just read to you what it says. It says, "No adverse action notices given by concessionaire to the township, and also the concessionaire states that it elects to exercise its right of termination if this agreement shall be valid for any purpose unless collateral debt remains outstanding." So, essentially, they can, they can end it if they want to, okay? And we have to pay fees and damages for them to end their contract, but we do not have the right to end the contract at any time. Section 14.2 C and D. Unforeseen events, more rate increases. So, and like I say, when over the dispute, there's so many more serious things to discuss with this, but I would just like to say, it is an absolute disaster to have even considered this, is beyond me. We can get our own bonds, we can do the work ourselves, they're going to be hiring contractors much of the time, this is something the Township of Edison can do. What are you getting for your money? Do you know what you're getting? You're getting employees, you're getting salaries, you're getting pensions, you're getting healthcare, you're getting everything to do, except with pipes and infrastructure. And then at the end, we still have to keep, continue putting more money back into the infrastructure, the last 10 years, or the last 15 years. This is not a good deal in any way, shape, or form. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list, last name Cordillo, David. All right, we're off the list. Mr. Diamond.
Bruce Diamond, 74 Calvert. I'm glad to see you pass number Resolution 320. It seems to me pretty obvious that the other two bidders chose not to cover the performance bond, and the liability to the town is far greater than the $200, $300,000 more we would have gotten from either one of those other bidders. Granted, I'm not a Facebook person, and I just don't get it, but I got to say, I was kind of disappointed in Councilman Joshi bringing this up like it's a slam dunk, without recognizing that there's issues associated with going forward. I certainly think, before you decide to do it, you need to understand what your legal responsibilities are, as to viewers posing questions, are you required to answer the question on the spot? I think there's a whole thing here, it's not just putting it on TV or putting it on Facebook. And I was really disappointed, his vision is so short-sighted, that he wasn't looking at the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Crystal, 14 Fox Road.
Thank you.
All right, I want to talk about 320. What's this property contaminated with? Exactly, because nobody was ever specific on that?
That's the point, sir. What we know is there is a pile of mulch, that the estimate is that it would be $1.5 million just to remove that. Then it needs to be, I think the word that the environmental people use is, it needs to be characterized. We need to figure out what else is there, and what else needs to be removed. There is, we have reason to believe that there is significant contamination, but I can't tell you that we have information that's exactly what that is and what the cost will be. We, the ballpark estimates we received were between $1 million and $2 million to remove...
Mulch and contamination is two different things.
And I'm not suggesting that they're the same thing, sir, I'm talking about two different things.
I mean, is it Agent Orange?
Sir, I'm talking about two different things.
Sir, allow the attorney to answer.
I'm trying to answer your question, if you don't want the answer, then I can stop, but...
Okay, I'm done with that, because I didn't want you to dance around the question. You're going to take up my time. What that lady said about before, about Delaware, they didn't, the LLC didn't do it in New Jersey, because in Delaware, you don't pay taxes, just so you know. They wouldn't have paid New Jersey taxes. Would I be allowed to come back up again later? There's more oral petitions or remarks, I got to make them all now.
If it's a rebuttal, sir.
Huh?
If it's a rebuttal, you can rebuttal for three minutes.
All right, so I'll be back up later.
Mr. Diamon.
Anthony Diamon, 15 Rodak Circle. I just want to tell a quick story, it's, and there'll be a point to it, regarding the SUEZ. I was one of the petitioners, and I probably myself got about 2,500, 3,000 signatures. But there was one specific day, it was a food truck and car show at Edison High School. I remember, I was going to do a signing there, and it was pouring raining outside, and I didn't think anybody would show, so I decided to, what I call the gold mobile, and I had people sending me their addresses to sign this, to sign the petition. And as I started to drive and go to people's homes, I get a call that there was a group of people, maybe 20 or 30 people, that were waiting at Edison High School to sign, and I couldn't believe it, because it was pouring, the weather was terrible. So, I turned back around, go back to Edison High School, and there's folks, there's a couple folks in here that were, ended up, that were there that day. And the weather cleared up, and people just kept coming and coming, and I remember, I promised Principal Ross, because I asked his permission to be there, that I would be there till 3 o'clock. It was about 3:20, and we had to stop. My point is, you know, we had a self-imposed deadline of June 1st, and we got about 5,000 signatures. If it was July 1st, I would have had 10,000 signatures, if it was August 1st, I would have had 20,000 signatures. The point is, the people don't want this deal. And you have an opportunity to do the right thing on July 10th and just end it, save the taxpayers' money for a special election. It's going to cost at least $100,000. The people clearly don't want the deal, like I said, I could have kept going and going. As a matter of fact, people kept on messaging us to continue signing, so that's just, I just want to put that into perspective, when you guys decide on whether or not to adopt the resolution or not. Thank you.
Thank you. We're off the list. All petitions and remarks. Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Joseph Johnson, 407 Durham Avenue. I'm going to be very brief. The Lena Harris Foundation is hosting its second annual 3-on-3 basketball tournament on July 27th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Mettuchen Sports Complex in Mettuchen, New Jersey. I would just like to invite all of the council members out to that day, and that's once again, July 27th, 2019, from 2:00 to 5:00. It's free to anybody who's attending, and if you want to play, it's only $20. And all the proceeds go to the Lupus Foundation of America and the Lena Harris Foundation Scholarship Fund, and we will also be raffling off free gift cards, free entrees and gift certificates to everybody who attends. Okay, thank you so much, I hope to see you there. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We're off the list, all petitions and remarks. Yes, sir.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. When we talked about the increase for the sewage, you were saying that the senior items would be, it would be a zero increase?
That's correct.
Is there a dollar qualification for income for a senior, or do you have to just be a certain age?
Certain age.
Okay, thank you. The second thing is, on the corner of Inman Avenue and Grove, it was the Inman Avenue Senior Center, or Senior Housing, and I noticed the name was changed to Menlo Manor Apartments. Is it still a senior facility?
Yes.
Because nowhere does it say that it's a senior, and when I went to the management firm that's down the bottom, that I guess is running it now?
They're privately owned, the town doesn't own that. The town doesn't own that. That was, there was recently a sale from one group to Menlo Manor. But it's, the operation, as I understand it, hasn't changed. But the town doesn't control the management there.
Yeah, because when I was looking at it, nowhere, and it, did it say anything about seniors? But is it specifically only seniors that live there still? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Phyllis Frederick, 107 George Avenue. This is my first time at a meeting, so I, you know, I don't know what the usual protocol is. But I had a question on that 320 line. Where is this property? Do you normally not list the address and location of a property when you're discussing it?
It usually is in there. I'm sorry if it's not. It's a 327 Meadow Road. It is, trying to figure out how to best describe it to you.
Is it near Middlesex County College?
Yeah, past. Yeah, well past there. It's an industrial area.
Oh, okay.
It's where the old recycling center or the boat launch in that area.
And did you say it's zoned for recycling? So that means that the company that purchased it is going to be doing recycling at the location?
There had been recycling there for years. There was a business that was located next door. It had rented some property from the town, subject to the property that's in the discussion here. He defaulted on that. We had numerous orders requiring him to do certain things. Eventually, he went bankrupt. We evicted him. The problem was, there was no money. He wasn't cleaning up the pile. We still had a very large pile that is subject to spontaneous combustion in the warmer weather. So the idea was to try and figure out how to get the property, get the pile removed, and to get the property cleaned up. And that was the purpose of this sale.
So do you know, once they clean up the property, what they're going to use it for?
Recycling. That's...
Oh, okay. So recycling would benefit the town? Wouldn't it?
I guess it depends on, I, I'm sure there could be a difference of opinion on it, but there could be a difference of opinion on whether or not pizza and apple pie are good too. So that's, certainly, there's a number of people would agree with you. I'll put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Walt Schneer.
Walt Schneer, Edison. The dump, which is recycling now, when's that going to open? I keep coming up and asking about it, but I don't get no answer.
Mr. Wissamahal.
Well, you mean the recycling center?
Yeah, the one that's got two trailers on it, Big San Hill.
Yes.
It's, all the garbage cans are there.
We're hoping for September.
September?
Yes. I don't want to promise you, but we're shooting for September.
And that's for sure.
Well, I don't want to promise you.
No. I know. But why is there two trailers on that property?
There's two trailers there now. Edison Wetlands Association has two trailers there. They're using it as a staging area temporarily. They have the, they're recycling for us throughout the town. Libraries, schools. And they store their stuff there temporarily, and then they come with a bigger truck and take it out.
Because I keep asking about the recycling. It was closed, there was something else. I forgot. And just need that little space there for recycling, because it's got no place else to put it.
It's a wonderful idea, and I'm anxious to get it finished myself. But there's money involved, and...
Oh, okay.
So we're hoping for September.
You're hoping?
I'm hoping.
Okay.
You won't have to come up here and ask me. I need longer.
Oh, that's okay. I need the exercise.
So do I.
Okay. The other thing is, the parks are getting more, what would you call it, kids' playthings? Playgrounds?
Playgrounds.
Yeah. Is that finished, or is that still going on?
I know there were some delays because of the weather, but I'd like to give you a more accurate timeline.
Yes, it's still, the various parks upgrades is still going on. And it has been delayed because of the severe rain that we've been experiencing. But the, you know, right now, it's currently scheduled to be completed by the middle of July.
Because I think the playground is completed, but there's a fairly large hill dirt still there.
You may be referring to one of the playgrounds?
Swales.
Swales. There are many playgrounds in this project. And they are all, like I said, they're all scheduled to be completed in a few weeks, weather permitting.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? First-time speakers? Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick, the editor of New Brunswick Today. And just have a couple clarifying questions. So first of all, the committee of the whole meeting is on for tomorrow?
No, it is on July 8th. I'm sorry, July 10th at 6:00 p.m., Monday.
No, the committee of the whole.
July 8th at 6:30.
Sorry, July 8th.
July 8th, 6:30.
Okay, so tomorrow's meeting's been rescheduled?
Correct.
Okay, July 8th here, what time?
6:30 p.m.
6:30, okay. I just want to clarify. And then, so, two days later, the council will have a special meeting, also here, July 10th, what time?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. And that's to have a second reading of the citizen-initiated petition.
It's the, correct, the final adoption.
Right. And so, I just want to understand how the process works. So there'll be a public hearing. Members of the public will be able to comment, like any other ordinance, right?
Correct.
Okay, then there'll be a vote of the council. And it was said that if a majority approve it, like any other ordinance, it will follow the usual process. And I want to understand, does that usual process, is that meant to include a role for the mayor? For instance, does the mayor have veto power over?
No.
No. So the mayor doesn't have a role in the process?
The usual process, what I meant was, the one thing that, the reason I said it is, what popped into my head is there's always a 20-day estoppel period for ordinances. I can't think of anything else that might apply. But it's, it wouldn't have, you know, if somebody wanted to challenge the validity of the adoption of the ordinance, you have to give them 20 days to file a prerogative redaction. But no, it couldn't be, I honestly, I don't think I've ever really thought through that issue, but I can't imagine the mayor would have veto power. I don't think the mayor has veto power on that, an initiated ordinance. So the answer's no on that.
We agree about this.
We do.
Yes.
I told you. I told you. We both lived long enough. Someday, we would.
Okay, great. So I just want to understand, majority vote. If the council approves, the ordinance becomes law. If not, it's put to the voters in a special election.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. First-time speaker. Mrs. Wolf.
Irene Wolf, Lead Avenue. I love my press. Where'd you go? Oh, he's talking to Artie Sefeli. Oh, he's going to get good news. This is what I miss. I want to go and hug that guy. Because I miss the press. And I've been here 50 years. I remember when the News Tribune and the Courier and the Sentinel used to sit here and take everything and put it in the paper. Now I don't know how they're getting it. I have a feeling they're calling Maureen, and she's telling them what transpired. Off that subject. I really didn't intend to come here today. But on this 9 Olson Avenue, you know that's my neighborhood, and I watch everything that goes there. And they don't like me, because I keep bringing up things that they should be doing by law. They have a different kind of law there. It's not our law. They just do what they want, and maybe they get lucky with a violation. Maybe. But then they just keep coming back and back. And I've been here 50 years, so I know the grill, drill, whatever. They want their taxes exempt. And I did get, I opened the request for what they want to do. And they did buy the building next door to their mosque. And now they want to get away with the taxes for that, because it's religious activities. So I've seen their application, and I know what they want to do in my mind, in my heart. I know what they're going to do. And I have a problem with them right now, because on 9 Olson, they have cut through the easement. I've told you guys this story so many times. I feel like I'm just a broken record. And they park on Nevsky Street, which is a public street, which they remind me of all the time. But when that came through, they were supposed to fence in the whole property. Well, they fenced it in, and then they took one block of something away. And they park on Nevsky Street and walk to their mosque. Now, from the beginning, that was not to be, should not have parked on Nevsky Street. Because in our planner and the reports that we always got, it was supposed to be closed in. And I think, oh, I know that they're in violation, because they keep that gate open. And they claimed in their application, it was supposed to be for use to come in and do some work. But if you follow the real application, that wasn't so. These are people, and I have pictures at home, many pictures, people parking and walking in with their garb and their children. And they're going into services. They're not going in for fixing up anything. Now, they've got that number nine, which is next door to their mosque, and they've been working, I think nights, because I don't see them in the day. And they've made three rooms that they want to rent out. So I'm saying, where are those cars going to park? And I don't think that's going to be a mosque there. I think, and as a matter of fact, I gave information to the assessor to show her that they are planning, oh, we'll rent the room out. The one room, they want to rent for $1,000. Second room is like $750. The third room is, and I say, okay, where are they going to park now? I have been asking you all to get involved. Nobody stuck up for me. I've always had to come here and fight my own battles, which I have no problem with. But they should have closed that gate, because I foresee that the building they're fixing up for whatever they're going to say, they say religious activities. Hmm, I think a cult could be considered an activity, religious activity. Are you with me, or are you against me?
No, 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 just keep going.
God bless me? I know God blesses me. He gives me all these wonderful things. But anyway, I don't trust him. I don't know who he is, but I don't trust him. But anyway, you really need to have somebody look into it. Mr. Northgrave even got a joke out of that one. That's my job. Didn't I ever tell you? My job in life down here is to make someone laugh or smile. And then there is my other job, which is to gather people behind me and fight with me. So far, I don't have too many people. I have my people in the neighborhood, who get up in the morning, get on the trains, go to New York, come back home, just have enough of time to eat dinner, say hello to their children, and then they start all over again. This is not the Edison I used to know. I used to know everybody in my neighborhood. And if I needed anything, they would come over. But now, we're in diversity, which is fine. But I don't like when people mess with my laws. I had a nice conversation with someone yesterday who told me whatever it was was political, about the soldier and the police officer, who was, as he says, flying around the world. And that is so ridiculous. And I'm going to say this. Don't mess with my veterans or my police. And you know who you are, and you're not even paying attention to me. Do you want me to repeat everything I said to you yesterday? I'll say a couple of things. Is he, is he a human resource person? No. I asked him, did he serve in the military? His answer was, no. But he has something to say about one of our police officers who is working with the government and with our town. So I left him not in good standing. And I would hope that whoever comes into town fires him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. First-time speakers.
Ala Katsav, 151 Butmann Avenue. Okay, I'm completely backing up this woman. It's really very sad that in our township, that people is building a mosque, and no one wants to pay attention to that. Okay? Why I'm telling that? My two sons grew up in this township. And this is the picture of them. Okay? I would like to show to everyone.
Oh, all right.
Okay? So these two boys went to service our country. They didn't, they didn't born in this country. But after 9/11, what happened was decided they're going to serve this country, because they love this country. And I think that Mr., who is sitting now, okay, and looking at his phone, it's disrespectful. It's respectful to all of us, okay, including you two. And we waited for his apology, and he never did. On top of that, he really should be fired. And you have to look into that mosque, what they're building. And we don't need that another 9/11 will happen in this country. That's all.
Thank you.
First-time public speakers. Sir.
Junior Romero, 100 Baird Street in New Brunswick, Food and Water Watch. I have some materials for the council. Who should I give these to? Thank you. Thank you, council members, council president. First and foremost, I want to thank the township clerk employees who reviewed the petition signatures. It is not a, an easy task to go through those signatures and verify them. So thank you to them for going through that. And yeah, I was not at the work session meeting the other day, but I did get a chance to, to watch the video. To, I know there were some concerns about remunicipalization of the water system. So, you know, to remunicipalize the water system from privatization is not difficult. Of course, we advise the township to hire a consultant or have a utility manager draft out a real plan. Because you don't need to buy back the system. You all just need to transition the workforce, create an organizational structure to house the water department, and update necessary permits. Since you all already manage the sewer system, it'll also be easier. You can expand the entity to encompass drinking water services as well. The public has spoken on what direction they'd like for Edison's Water and Wastewater, publicly owned and operated utilities. For the sewer system, you all just need to continue to manage and own. For the sewer system, y'all just need to continue to manage and own. For Edison's Water, particularly the one specific contract, was once completely publicly owned. We shouldn't forget that. And the public wants that, again. So in short, we've always thought that remunicipalization and keeping the sewer system in public hands is the best for ratepayers. It's the best to keep prices stable. The township can publicly bond at a much lower rate for necessary repairs. We don't know if it's to the extreme that Suez was discussing. But now we can, the township can implement their own study, hopefully after approving the ordinance. Just to be clear, again, what the ordinance does, the near 5,000 residents, voters that signed the petition, it basically put a moratorium on privatization. Moratorium on privatization, basically stopping the Suez deal in its tracks. It was recently reported that the mayor said he was pulling out of the Suez deal, reconsidering the Suez deal. That's great, we appreciate, he's discussing that rhetoric. But the action this body can take now to put a moratorium on privatization and actually implement and get away from the Suez deal is by adopting this ordinance outright, voting yes. 5,000 voters, 5,000 voters signing this petition, it'll, it's unclear how many voters would come out for a special election. It will not be much more than 5,000. It turned out would just be low. That's, that's how, and even if it was in November, turnout will still unfortunately be low. So, the 5,000 voters have spoken. We are confident that those folks would come out and vote. If the, you know, the Faulkner Act, it's a beautiful thing, it gives the council the opportunity to, to show that representative democracy works. If representative democracy doesn't work, and a council votes against the will of petition signers, then we have direct democracy. There's the failsafe of direct democracy. So, urging the council, every single member, to vote yes on this ordinance, to stop Suez, to put a moratorium on privatization, to remunicipalize the contract for the water system that's going on a month-by-month basis. You've extended the American Water Contract until December, that's great, we need a long-term solution, and let's pass the ordinance so we can start doing that immediately. So, thank you very much. And I'm glad to meet with any of the council members, one-on-one, as long as you want. My phone number, 909-202-5961. Glad to sit down with you, get our experts also with you. What you have is a guide that Food and Water Watch has created to other towns around the country that have remunicipalized their water and sewer systems. I urge all of y'all to, to take a look at it. Again, glad to meet with you. But all in all, the voters have spoken with their petition. They are willing to vote at the ballot box and show twice that they're willing, that they want to remunicipalize and keep sewer system public. But let's, let's hope representative democracy wins and y'all just approve this ordinance outright. Thank you.
First-time speakers.
Esther Neves, 162 B. Fay Street. And I have an announcement, first of all, on behalf of the Greenway Group in Edison. And this was in the paper last Friday. At the Clara Barton Library, on Saturday, June 29th, that's this coming Saturday, from 11 until 1, the Greenway Group is going to be holding a discussion on all of the things that they do in the area. And it's especially important for people to support the Greenway, and of course, they, as you know, they go right through Clara Barton. So, we really love our Greenway Group. And I hope that the people of Clara Barton will come out and support not only the Greenway Group, but also the Clara Barton Library. It's a wonderful opportunity for them to spend a little time at the library, and that's very important. The library board, this is another announcement, the library board has changed the time of their meeting on the second Tuesday of every month from 6:00 PM, they are now going to meet at 7:00 PM. So, I hope that this will make it possible for a few more people to come out and attend the library board meetings. Because it's very important to make sure that we follow what they are and are not paying attention to there. They're starting to improve their agenda. And one of the things that's still on their agenda, that they really are very slow at making progress with, is the bookmobile. At the last meeting on Monday that you had, there was a question brought up about the bookmobile. And I want to thank Councilman Zindowski for asking about the bookmobile. And also, Councilman Lombardi. It's true that they had a problem with buying a new bookmobile, and it turned out to be very defective, and they had to sue and get back most of their money and give back the defective bookmobile, and they've been without one. However, I was a little amazed to hear that they are now considering two small vehicles of some kind. One of the things that's important to realize is that the people who drive the bookmobile came to the library board several times and said to them that what they have been faced with, which is, which is currently using a small van to try to take books around occasionally to places, has been totally inadequate. Because nobody can get into the van, it's too small, they have books stacked in cartons inside, nobody can see the books, they don't know what they're trying to come out and get in the bad weather, they can't get in this vehicle because it's too small, there's no place for children to stop and look at the, at the books. If we end up with two small vehicles and they do not offer people the opportunity to do what a bookmobile is supposed to do, which is to provide a people a chance to come in, look at books, make a selection, and especially for the kids, to have the experience of coming inside a bookmobile and learning how to pick out their own books, to have them on display the way they do in a regular bookmobile, as I understand it. And I went inside the old bookmobile, it was, it was a very nice experience to go inside. If we don't have an experience like that, simply because they are afraid that if they spend a lot of money and buy a new bookmobile, they'll have a bad experience, I think is not the way to go about making this a choice. Two small vehicles, I'm not sure is going to do it. And I would like to make sure that before they decide on two small vehicles, that we find out exactly what that means in terms of the experience for people to come and pick out their books, and especially for the kids. So, I'm looking forward to hearing what it is that they are finally trying to come up with. I would like to hope that somebody went to Washington this weekend to take a look at the bookmobiles. If they didn't go to the library board, the New Jersey Library Board for a meeting to learn something, I don't know if they sent anybody down there. Because they're too busy trying to figure out how they can build new walls for the new people that they tried to hire, instead of providing new library services. They really need to get their act together about this. But I'm paying attention, and I hope that people will come out on, on Tuesday, the, Tuesday the 9th, okay, which is in between these other two meetings, and pay attention to what the library board is, or isn't doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Neves.
Mary Ann Hennessy, Carmelo Drive. I want to voice my support with what Esther had to say. The bookmobile had always been based over at the main library. And it was constantly out on the road, and it had a lot of people using it. I agree with Esther that I can't see how a small van is going to give you the same experience that the bigger one does. It does not give you a library experience when it's small. I also want to comment that I've started watching the library trustees' meetings. They are disgusting. They don't know how to run a meeting. Not one person on that board knows, maybe two, knows how to run that meeting. When you sit there as the president of the board, and the lady sitting next to you is telling you what you need to do, there's something wrong. When the librarian is trying to explain that she's gone out to the libraries in Somerset and the libraries in Ocean County, which are a perfect example of what a library should be, because I've been there. And she's trying to explain about a phone system, and a man sitting up there decides he's going to open his mouth because he doesn't like what she's saying, and he goes over her to the point that when it got a little bit quiet, she said in a very nice voice, can I continue what I'm trying to present? And he went right over her again, and the president of that board did not gavel it down. They don't know how to run a meeting. And if this is an example of it, then I begin to question a lot about what was going within the library over the last number of years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. First-time speakers. Second-time speakers. Sir.
Oh, here's my friend.
Nice to meet you. In New Jersey...
Name an address again for the right...
Again?
Yes, sir.
Cristo, 14 Fox Road. I saw in the, in the media, that she loves so much, I'm also the media, I got a YouTube channel.
Good.
Subscribe, Cristo the Greek. I read in the media that New Jersey, they're allowing LGBTQ history to be taught to elementary school kids, and I'd like you up there to say that it won't be allowed. Stop sexualizing our children.
We don't have any jurisdiction over school matters or state matters.
What do you mean?
If it's driven by the state, we don't have any jurisdiction over it.
Okay, I'll move on. Can you promise me that no pedophile, Channel 4 News came last time? Because Reese Mano, he spoke bad about Officer Tingle, who I really like, God bless Officer Tingle. But Channel 4 also had another video about pedophile drag queens showing up to school in Harlem, and I want you to tell me, promise this community, that you will not have pedophile drag queens sexualizing our children.
I mean, I believe that that's a school board matter. It's a criminal act, I mean, the police...
It is a criminal act, actually, because pedophiles not, not allowed 1,000 feet away from a school and a child, so, but they stopped enforcing this law because Democrats took over.
Sir.
Are you all, which one of you, how many of you are Republicans up there?
No.
Nobody, okay, that's why this is going on. A.J. Patel, thank you for joining us today. It comes to my attention...
Please don't address council members directly, go through the chair first.
What do you mean?
If you have a question for, if you have a question for a council member, you need to go through the chair and then we'll address the council member.
Okay. Oh, you're the chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to speak to A.J. Patel, please.
You may ask the question to me, and if you'd like to answer, you can ask.
Okay. It has, came to my attention that A.J. Patel has been sending out, oh, Cesar Suarez doesn't exist, I went to the address that was given at the committee of the hall, he doesn't live there, 221 Sutton's Lane. He never lived there, I was told. Also, why are you sending out racial flyers to Indians and Chinese not to vote for the Republican man?
Sir, this council's not going to be...
I mean, the Indian community of Edison...
Sir, I've said before, this is, this is, this is an opportunity for public comment. You're not going to stand there and cross-examine this council and act as if you're a prosecutor. You are not going to cross-examine this council.
Excuse me? They're public servants. I pay taxes.
That doesn't give you the right, doesn't give you the right to cross-examine them, sir.
I'm not cross-examining anybody.
Yes, you are, you're, you're, you're assuming facts and you're, and you're demanding an answer on facts that have not been proven, and you're simply assuming them and you're trying to put the council people under the gun, and that's not going to be tolerated here. If you have another, if you have another comment, we'd love to hear your comments.
So, you're the hired gun that...
No, sir, I'm the attorney, and I, I'm going to sit there...
Exactly, I didn't come here to speak to any, I came here to speak to my representatives that we vote for. I didn't vote for them because I vote Republican, oh, you're going to end my time now.
Time is up, sir.
The, no, 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 I'm, I got six minutes. There's a woman, Esther, last time...
I didn't talk.
Yeah, let me talk. The woman, Esther, last time she came here, she said the microphone didn't work, she said you got to put your TV up to 100, which that's true, I actually did have to put my...
You now have nine minutes, sir. You've had nine minutes.
Huh? Nine, that's a lie. That's a lie.
You had six minutes, and now you've just had three.
Press?
Yes, I am the press.
Tell them the...
It's an international war crime to interfere with my business, and it's against the USA Constitution, so...
That's right.
Can I continue? May, may I continue?
Sir, you're done.
Why? I, I'm not done with my time, I'm the media. I got a YouTube channel, Cristo the Greek, subscribe to my channel, they're trying to kick me out for no reason. I did nothing wrong.
Cristo.
I'm, I'm asking legitimate questions.
You're being asked to leave. Thank you.
This is a joke. This is a fucking joke. I mean, I was asking legitimate questions, and I'm getting kicked out for what?
Second-time speakers.
Anthony DeAmmerich, 15 Roderick Circle. I'm glad that people are bringing up the library board again. It's something that you guys need to keep an eye on. It is, I believe the library board president recently even stated that they're going to build a new library, which is, I don't even know, there is no new library being built, the, the whole board had no idea what, what he was talking about, he was just rambling on. But it's, again, I'll repeat it again, the library, the employees in the library, you know, they need a voice, they really do, they're, I feel sorry for them. And they, you got, the, the library board has been politicized, it's been really politicized now, really bad, it's been, let's just face it, it's filled with nothing but committee people now. And I hope that, you know, the residents of this town really start paying attention to that board, get to those meetings. Esther's been talking about it for a long time, we got to get to library board meetings. But I hope, you know, I hope we put library people inside the library, that's, that's who deserves to be there, library people, not, not political appointments. And, you know, I'm glad that people are starting to pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Second-time speakers. Mrs. Wall.
Irene Wall. Two tall people speaking here. The bookmobile. Esther, you are a gem, you are a diamond in Edison. I've been thinking about this bookmobile for many years, it used to go up and down my street. And I know that there were some young kids and some disabled people who were using the bookmobile. My idea of the bookmobile is to go out, get a new one, because we seem to be buying everybody else's junk. Okay? In my opinion, in my opinion. I think we should get the bookmobile, and I think we ought to get the developers who come into town, and I know this is against the law, so don't stop me. However, you could meet for dinner and politely say, you know, we need a bookmobile, why don't five of you give me so much money? For our children, and if you live in town, which they don't, the developers never live in Edison. They come, they rape our land, and they move down to beautiful, what's the town I always say? Thank you. Hey, Julian, Julian, they live down in Rumson. They don't live where they build. And there's a lot of times when they build, it's shoddy, or it's... Mr. Coyle, are you sleeping?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw your head down. I'm used to people tuning me out, but anyway, there are ways, and you ask any woman who has to live on a budget, how she can get what she needs. And this bookmobile is a disgrace. And I know you were council people, and I know who the library people are when we left the town and gave them the authority to be away from us. But I'm shocked at what I hear. I am shocked at what I hear. Esther's been here probably as many years as I, I'm here 50 years, so I'm here since your lensics, you know what I'm saying? I saw all the little, you know, things that go on. But you know what? We come to you, we ask you, and some people come here and give you the thing they would like you to do, and it's ignored. I talked to Lois yesterday, I can't tell you how many times she filed application to be on a committee, which half of them are not even full. So what is it? Is this the beautiful Edison, but nobody gets to be on a committee? I, I don't want to be on a committee. I do much better over here on the dais, because I can say what I want, and I don't have to be in... Mr. Coyle, I think you're sleeping, what is going on?
Hey, sir.
Oh, I woke you up, I'm sorry.
I've heard every word you said, I'm sorry.
You heard every word I said?
And Ms. Wall, as we discussed, it's...
What?
It's, it's public comment. It's really not appropriate for you to be, you know, challenging these people.
I'm not challenging anybody. Absolutely not. I come here with ideas that are never, ever agreed upon.
So, Mr. Coyle's sitting back in his seat, and...
Well, he looked like he was sleeping.
Well, that's, again, I know it's your opinion...
It's my opinion, it's my opinion, so I don't need your intervention.
Well, yeah, you do, because the camera's on you, and Mr. Coyle is not on TV.
No, you don't, no, I don't, you're an attorney, tell me what lawyer, what law are you talking about? That, I say, I can't say anything to him. Please give me that.
You could say whatever you, you're just not cross-examining these people, that's just not going to happen.
I'm not cross-examining him, I'm asking him if he's sleeping, because he's got his eyes...
eyes closed.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wall, I looked at my phone and...
I accept your apology, but please, I used to see one of the attorneys sit here reading his book, going for, and a board of education person who was doing homework on the thing. Okay.
Anybody else?
Motion to close the public portion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It extends the term.